In the middle of a city in crisis.
By now, you've heard the leaked audio. Councilmembers Nury Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, Gil Sadio making racist and derogatory statements, even insulting another council member's three-year-old son. That councilman is Mike Bonin. He's here live, along with Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson.
Let's not forget, the recording was from a backroom meeting in a union office in an attempt to secretly negotiate the power dynamics in the city.
Thousands of people took to City Hall demanding resignations. So far, only Nury Martinez has left the council. And Kevin DeLeon says he's staying.
So tonight, in partnership with the L.A. Times, we've brought together city leaders, community members, and the reporters who broke this story to discuss how we got here and where we go from here.
This is "L.A. in Crisis: A Call for Change." We'll be joined by the most important voice, you, the citizens of L.A. From LaMert Park to Koreatown to Studio City, we'll hear from you. We also have a live audience right here in studio.
With that, we welcome you to our Fox 11 News L.A. Times special event, "L.A. in Crisis: The Call for Change." I'm Alex Michelson.
And I'm Marla Tejas. This is a one-hour town hall designed to hear directly from the community.
The L.A. Times has been all over this story with headline after headline. Ben Aruskas and Elsie Granderson are both here, and so is a familiar face from the mayor debates, my previous co-moderator, Erica D. Smith.
Erica, welcome. Thank you so much for being here. What are you hoping we see within the next hour?
Thank you. I'm really looking forward to hearing what the community has to say about all that's transpired over the last few days, and also from our council members about how we move forward as a city.
And let's begin that process and begin with the not-so-simple question of, how did we get here?
Phil Schuman, he's live at the Fox 11 L.A. Times Town Hall location in Studio City. It's the famous Arts Deli on Ventura. Phil.
Well, Marla, Alex, we've gathered a cross-section of community members in this centralized location here in the San Fernando Valley. Everybody knows Arts Deli on Ventura Boulevard. People who are motivated, people who are voters, people who are following the city politics, who are following this crisis and hope we can emerge stronger. So there will no doubt be a lot to talk about, a lot of thought-provoking comments tonight. But first, as you mentioned, Alex and Marla, let's update people on how we got to this controversial, emotional, and crucial point in our city's history. The firestorm ignited Sunday, October 9th, after the L.A. Times published the accounts of the racist comments recorded a year ago at the L.A. County Federation of Labor and briefly posted online.
They're raising him like a little white kid. This kid needs a beat down. Like, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
That was then-council president Nury Martinez with Kevin DeLeon, Gil Sadio, as well as labor head Ron Herrera.
So we want you to come out!
Reaction swift that night protesters at Martinez's home.
No meeting!
Herrera resigned. And at the city council meeting Tuesday, October 11th, a raucous crowd silenced only by Mike Bonin's impassioned speech, his young, black, adopted son had been targeted.
That makes my soul bleed, and it makes my temper burn.
Every vote, every decision is standing!
The next day, meeting canceled, and Martinez would resign with a statement reading in part, "It is with a broken heart that I resign my seat for Council District 6, the community I grew up in, and my home."
KDL is anti-black!
Sadio's spokesman continues to say the councilman's in a moment of reflection. As for DeLeon, just yesterday, he insisted he will not resign, not what protesters at their homes want to hear.
We got to remember why they were meeting. They were conspiring to undermine black power. They were conspiring to undermine the power of the community.
So the question so many people are asking, of course, and we will be exploring in the next hour, how do we move forward as a city? How do we heal, especially if Kevin DeLeon, and to a lesser degree Gil Sadio, because he already has been voted out, refused to leave office, which is something virtually everyone is demanding? So lots to talk about, lots to think about. Live from our Town Hall location in Studio City, I'm Phil Schuman.
Alex, Marla.
All right, Phil, thanks so much. Joining us now, in fact, are council members men, Mike Bonin and Marquise Harris-Dawson. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Councilman Bonin, this tape talked about you. Let's start with you on this question. Kevin DeLeon gave an interview yesterday and said that he tried to leave a voicemail for you, or he left a voicemail for you, hasn't talked to you. What'd he say on the voicemail? Would you call him back? What would you say to him directly if he comes into those council chambers?
So, yeah, he left a voicemail early Sunday morning, a couple hours after the Times story broke, it was being flooded with calls. He gave a half-hearted apology, I thought. He apologized for not intervening when a meeting got out of hand, or conversation got out of hand, and he noted that "my family is not fair game even when we disagree." He didn't talk about the particular comments. He didn't make any gesture of apology to my son. He didn't apologize for the blatantly anti-black racism on there. If I were to see Kevin today, I would say, as I did in council the other day, it's not my right to apologize. That prerogative belongs to a little boy who's too young to understand the hateful things on that message. And if he wants to wait 10 or 12 years and then ask my son for an apology, he can. He can't come to me to ask for an apology from the black community in Los Angeles. He needs to go to the black community in Los Angeles and do that. And the other thing I would say to him, because I don't know that he's ever had a conversation with my son, is my son is a beautiful little boy. He is smart, and he is tough, and he is funny, and he is kind, and he's adventurous. He's just absolutely, absolutely joyful. And if people have heard stuff about him on these tapes, which I know people who have a brain and a heart don't believe, I want them to hear what a wonderful and incredible kid I have, who has been embraced and loved by L.A., and I'm very grateful for that.
Wow, well, Councilman Marquise, you come to this from a different perspective, of course. You did have sort of a tense conversation you described earlier in that first meeting with Kevin DeLeon when he showed up. If he does, and it sounds like he plans to show up, what would you say to him?
You know, I'm pretty much done talking to Mr. DeLeon for now. I think if he shows up, there's going to be a problem on the council floor. I hope that he doesn't show up. He penned a letter to the new council president today indicating he wouldn't show up. We hope he keeps to that, almost as much as we hope he resigns right away.
How can they move on? How can you do your jobs without him being there? Do you foresee the work of the people?
So the people's work has to go on. I mean, it's one of the reasons why, you know, I've had some back and forth about whether the councils should go on. I came out feeling like we can't go back to business as usual, but here's what it means to not go back to business as usual. It means COVID protections expire. The other day, we voted on about, you know, several dozen new affordable housing units. City can't afford to let those kinds of things fall by the wayside because we have these two recalcitrant and selfish members.
Also important to point out that Nury, as chair of the COVID committee, Kevin as chair of the homelessness committee, and Gil as chair of the housing committee, watered down, road-blocked, kneecapped, and killed legislation that actually would have helped people, would have helped address homelessness, would have helped address the affordable housing crisis, would have helped renters. And they systematically did that to consolidate power and to ace out people who worked in coalitions elsewhere. So good things now have an opportunity to happen that they were killing.
Erica.
Yes, so, I mean, just to go back to your son for one second, you mentioned he's, you know, too young to really understand what's going on. When you do talk to him, what would you say? And what would you say that what has happened meant, what does that say about L.A.?
Well, you know, he knows the people who said these words, right? He's seen them before. And so there's a sting in that, right? These are people he thought that he perhaps should trust. Like any eight-year-old black boy in Los Angeles, he's been spoken to about racism a lot, so I don't think he's surprised by racism. What I can tell him is that Los Angeles, like universally, stood up for him and stood up against, not just the comments against him, but the anti-black racism that was dripping all over that call. And the part he will remember, and this is the thing about this week that just warms me, is for all the hate we heard, we felt so much love. And last weekend was the Taste of Soul in Crenshaw, and they invited our family, and they acknowledged my son from the stage. And he was just given such love and warmth. And that's the thing that he experienced personally this week. And so I hope that he understands from that and feels that Los Angeles is a great place where people come together and support each other and love each other.
Let's get a poll from our in-studio audience here, if you will. If you don't mind raising your hands, do you think that Kevin DeLeon should resign? Raise your hands if you think he should resign. So almost everybody in our studio audience thinks that he should resign. Raise your hand, are you surprised that he hasn't resigned? A few people are surprised that he hasn't, others--
The majority expected it, expected him to stand the ground. What about you two? Are you two surprised when he came out? You're shocked.
I'm stunned he hasn't come to his senses and resigned. I think every day that he doesn't resign, he creates a new set of articles and newsclips that are part of his history forever, and he makes himself much more difficult to employ. So I think it's a disaster. And, you know, this letter that he put out about, oh, I can't leave because my district needs me, this is a person who was ready to leave. If his mayoral race had gone anywhere, he'd be leaving in December, so just pretend you won the mayor's race and get out.
And this is a guy who could have taken office two or three months earlier because the seat was vacated, but he didn't. He waited to take office back a couple years ago in 2020.
Plus, he's office committees now, right? You all don't want to work with him. People are saying that we're going to keep protesting and stop council from doing business as long as he's there, and yet he feels like he is in the best position to represent his constituents with all those things in mind? That is quite something.
I think it's worth pointing out, though, from our audience here, that not every single hand went up when it came to resignation. Does that surprise you?
No, I mean, look, if you ask 100 people, it's a sky blue, there'll be a few that don't raise their hand. I mean, the beautiful thing about the United States and Los Angeles is that we have a multitude of opinions, but there are very few things where you get this high level of agreement. That's what's stunning. It's not stunning that a couple people didn't. What's stunning is there are very few questions you can ask about politics, and you get 85%.
When's the last time Black Lives Matter Los Angeles and the police union issued statements calling for the same thing?
There you go. You brought it together, one way or another. Now we want to go to Koreatown. Gina Silva is live at the Fox 11 News L.A. Times Town Hall location there, which is the Koreatown Youth and Community Center. Gina.
That's right, and we have a great group, diverse people here, ready for questions, ready for comments. All right, so we're going to ask the same question to all of you. Are you guys shocked that Kevin DeLeon refuses to step down?
No.
No? You said something earlier that I thought, that's interesting.
Well, absolutely characteristic of someone that's a narcissist. He's absolutely selfish. It's self-serving.
Self-serving. That's pretty much what everybody here says. Now, Steve Kang, you have a question about redistricting for the panel, so go ahead.
Yes, last year, Koreatown was one of the epicenters for activism on redistricting. So how can we, as a community, continue to advocate for a system that where council members will not have any influence over the redistricting process for the city of Los Angeles?
Thank you for that. That's a question for you guys.
Marquise, I know this is something you want to work on going forward on the council, and you think that reform is coming.
Reform is coming. Will be on the ballot at the next available election with a charter amendment that moves redistricting from the Los Angeles City Council members to an independent commission. And that independent commission will have rules about who can be on it, what their relationships can be to people who are running for office, or people who lobby the city council on a regular basis. So I think we'll get a much cleaner and better system. Literally every 10 years, almost without fail, someone gets in trouble around this redistricting system because it's just a fundamentally bad idea to have politicians picking their voters. Just doesn't make sense.
And I know there's also a push to increase the number of council districts as well. All right, we're not done. We're just getting started. Much more with L.A. City Council members Mike Bonin and Marquise Harris-Dawson.
You are watching "L.A. in Crisis: The Call for Change," live on Fox 11 and streaming live on Fox L.A., the L.A. Times, and live now.
Prop 64 was passed by the voters in California in 2016, and basically it legalized the sale and use of recreational cannabis. Legal cannabis was sold to the voters as something that was going to help every Californian. Legal Weed: Broken Promises is a series that examines the state of cannabis in California today. The implications, if this continues to go wrong, are huge.
That's the one. So great. I can't even celebrate. I am so worried we're not going to the finale of our lead for episode 3.
I found her. I'm telling you, she is about to blow up.
I've never heard of her.
Thank you.
Came from nowhere.
Do you think she can do the backbend?
Used to be yoga instructor.
I know everyone's a yoga instructor in L.A., but the envelope is calling her the frontrunner for this year's award season.
Bring her in.
Okay, let's talk about the tentacles. They're kind of like arms, not legs.
I wrote this letter to the L.A. Times, trying to address the excessive amount of pollution that we breathe in daily.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times because of the culture of the Torrance Police.
I wrote to the L.A. Times because there's other cities who already ban leaf flowers.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times to point out the problems with illegal abortion.
Welcome back to this special hour from Fox 11 News and the L.A. Times, "L.A. in Crisis: The Call for Change."
All right, we want to get our first question from the audience here at Fox 11 Studios. This is Pastor Mark Jones from the Westwood Presbyterian Church. Pastor, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. Councilman, we all know that apologies do not transform hearts, and that people say they are sorry when they are caught doing something wrong. My question is, what other than resignations can the city council do to resolve this loss of confidence?
Harris-Dawson, why don't you take it first?
So it's a very good question. The charter limits what the council can do to a council member. So for instance, people will remember that we suspended Jose Weisari, we suspended Mark Ridley-Thomas. That was because there's a specific provision that allows us to suspend if a person is awaiting trial. Other than that, we're pretty limited. I'm chairing a committee on censure. We're going to put some meat on the bones about what censure means, but we know that our limitations are moving them off the council. That is something that both of them have to do voluntarily.
But what about bigger than that, I think is what he's asking, beyond just them? There's a trust problem right now for the council.
There's a huge trust problem.
And even if they all left, there still would be a trust problem. How do we get beyond that?
Yeah, I think the remaining council members, people who weren't on that tape, have a huge responsibility, I'll be gone in 54 days, so it's on him, have a huge responsibility to rebuild that trust. And I think it's about showing that through example, that we can all work together, that we don't, for one group to succeed, another doesn't have to fail, right? I think we can model that, I think we can do that. And I think it means delivering on things that actually help people. Like all the things I mentioned that got bottled up, those things need to come through the council, and the council needs to move beyond the words, move beyond the lip service, and do the work, and it requires the whole council, of working on inequity and injustice in L.A. And there's a hell of a lot of work to do.
Well, we know that the focus, especially since yesterday, has been on Kevin DeLeon, but let's not forget about Councilman Gil Sadio. And there have been calls for him to resign, but then sort of preface with the idea that he only has a few more weeks left. And Erica, you wanted to broach this topic.
Yes, I mean, we've talked a lot about Councilman DeLeon, but how important is it for Councilman Sadio to step down? I mean, is it, and do you think he will step down? I'm going to start with you, Councilman Bob Bonin.
I don't know if he will step down. I think for Los Angeles's sake and for his own sake, he should. I mean, I want to be clear, I don't wish ill on Nury, or Kevin, or on Gil. Using Gil for an example, Gil has had a remarkable career. He was the lonely, determined voice on behalf of undocumented immigrants for generations. He has done some great work in his career, particularly in the earlier parts. I want that to be remembered. And I think what he needs to do for his own sake, for his own reputation, for his own legacy, is he needs to resign, and he needs to atone. I think he needs to go to the communities that were offended, not just the black community, but the Oaxacan community. And he needs to begin to do the work to make amends, to redeem himself. And I think, as I said before, I think everybody has a road to redemption and deserves it, but that road doesn't begin in city council chambers.
Absolutely.
Councilman Marquise.
You know, as an African-American, Gil was probably the most disappointing person to hear on the tape, because Gil, in part, got his start in politics because he made news as the first elected Latino president of a majority-black labor union, SEIU 660. So he got his start in the black community, and I know Gil enough to know that he knows better. The other people in the room, I don't know them well enough to say whether they do or don't. He knows better. And I think it's been shattering to just hear him on that tape. And so I do think he needs to resign, and I think he needs to do something affirmative. You know, I'll share, I called him up on Friday, invited him to come to church with me on Sunday. So let's go to a black church. You've been in a black church, you know how to operate in a black church. Come and apologize.
What did he say? What did he say?
He couldn't, he couldn't, he couldn't get there.
Did he answer the phone, though?
He replied, but he didn't come.
Yeah, and he also didn't come here. We offered him and Kevin DeLeon and Nury Martinez opportunity to come on, and Paul Krikorian, to talk today, and they declined that offer.
Okay, we want to get to our Coco McAvoy live at the Fox 11 News L.A. Times Town Hall location in LaMert Park, the Metaphor Club. Coco.
Good evening. That's right, we're here at the Metaphor Club in LaMert Park with a lot of concerned residents, many of them from District 8, which is Harris-Dawson's district. And at first, I want to ask everyone, how many people think that there should be resignations following this? That's unanimous here. And we want to get to their questions here, so we're going to start with Lawrence. You're a business owner here in LaMert Park, so start with your question to the councilmen.
I think, you know, we have obviously a controversy, but the day before the controversy, you know, we have conditions that are in our districts, and the day after the controversy, we have conditions in our districts, whether or not they actually resign or not. But as a business owner here in District 8, one of the things that when we talk to businesses is that we feel that, from the high-up policy, we're not actually really getting the value in terms of services that we see in the rest of the city. And I think what the, you know, the three that were in this controversy kind of reflect is kind of this notion of black businesses in particular being marginalized. So what will you all do directly? Not in terms of, you know, training, this soft kind of support for our businesses, but in terms of being able to allocate resources that are, you know, concrete to allow us to actually thrive after this pandemic.
Councilman Marquise will start.
You know, I think it's a good question. So it is true that, you know, there are problems yesterday, there are problems today, and they won't be solved by tomorrow. But what is important to remember about those tapes is those people make policies. So every time a policy gets made, those opinions are baked into it. So it's not a coincidence, what this business owner says. It's not a coincidence that it always feels like our communities get less when it comes to services, when it comes to safety, when it comes to investment, when it comes to lending, all of it. Those opinions are baked in at the highest levels, and it trickles down. And so everything is a fight, if you're sitting in my seat, everything is a fight just to get what the other people are getting without even asking.
Most important thing, both of you guys, is sort of a final word, going forward to heal, most important thing that needs to happen, most important thing you want to see hap happen.
I think it's largely about what happens in the elections going on right now. You know, we have a candidate for mayor, Karen Bass, who has a reputation as a healer. We have candidates who are running for council right now, who I think can do a great job bringing people together. In my district, we've got one candidate, Aaron Darling, who's a civil rights lawyer. We have another, who's an employer's lawyer, who defended the use of the N-word in court. Those are two different philosophies. And if we elect the right people to meet this incredibly difficult and challenging moment, then we can get through it quickly.
I think it's the same. I think we have an opportunity with a new council. We'll, you know, have, you know, up to half a dozen new members. We get to turn the page, set a new, set a new way of doing business. But we've got to open this thing up. This idea that the council presidency is some kind of imperial leader, and they just decide things, and all of us go along with it, that has to end. The, you know, whether it's who's on what committee, how long it takes a bill to, an ordinance to make it to the council floor for debate, all of that, we got to throw open, and one, let the sun shine in, and two, change how we do business.
Paul Krikorian was on our air saying that he wants to limit the presidency of the L.A. County, or L.A. City Council presidency. You two, thank you so much for being with us and taking part in tonight's--
Really appreciate it.
We've got more ahead here tonight. So much of this has been about the racism in those tapes, but what it all started with was a secret meeting on the issue of redistricting.
Yeah, the backdoor deals, the secret agreements, we break it down next. You're watching "L.A. in Crisis: The Call for Change," live on Fox 11 and streaming live on Fox L.A., the L.A. Times, and live now.
Okay.
Ta-da!
It's your garage.
Mom, it's an ADU.
An AD who?
An additional dwelling unit. I read this article in the L.A. Times about the housing shortage and ways to get around the red tape.
Did you do this for me?
Needs a little bit of work, but--
No!
Forgot your housewarming gift. It's an earthquake kit.
Oh, now you want to scare me?
I mean, I'm just saying, the big one's coming.
Let me enjoy this moment. I have a lot of decorating to do. What should we start? I got to move my things out here.
I wrote this letter to the L.A. Times, trying to address the excessive amount of pollution that we breathe in daily.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times because of the culture of the Torrance Police.
I wrote to the L.A. Times because there's other cities who already ban leaf flowers.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times to point out the problems with illegal abortion.
Welcome back to this special hour from Fox 11 and the L.A. Times, "The Call for Change."
We want to dive into the topic at the center of those controversial recordings, that's redistricting.
So what is redistricting? Let's talk about District 4. In 2011, Griffith Park, Hollywood Hills, some of North Hollywood, Eric Garcetti represented it back then. But then 10 years later, the lines are redrawn again. North Hollywood is out, Sherman Oaks is in, and again in 2021, here we go again, a huge change. It loses Larchmont and Hancock Park, but it gains Reseda and Encino. Over the years, time and time again, neighbors, businesses, schools, communities sliced apart. But why?
L.A. Times reporter Ben Aruskas joins us to explain. Thank you for being with us. This is your expertise. Explain to us how redistricting works now versus what we just heard Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson say, and the need for an independent commission to oversee the process.
Thank you for having me. This process, it happens every 10 years. It's enormously contentious. And basically, what you heard on that tape is a conversation that is about the frustration over redistricting. And the reason they were frustrated is because the members, Marquise and Bonin as well, everyone, got to choose who was-- everyone, got to choose who was on the commission. It wasn't independent in the sense that the people who had chosen who were on the commission, they thought they were acting in their interest, not so much the interest of the people of the district necessarily. What people are clamoring for, and they had been clamoring for this before this incident, is something that is much more independent, resembles something that the state does, where people apply, there's an element of randomness that is introduced to it, and is trying to sort of distance as much as possible the people who are making this choice from the people who are doing the choosing and are trying to influence them.
And so California has this system. It was a big Schwarzenegger push. There's Democrats, Republicans, independents on the state redistricting thing, which is not the case in a lot of other states, where it's all about gerrymandering and partisan lines. And so this pushes. He says that this is going to happen in 2024. Is that pretty likely to happen?
It's sort of hard to tell right now because we're sort of in the chaos still of, you know, the repercussions. We still have members who haven't resigned. Will they resign? There are various different paths moving forward. There is an attempt to put something on the ballot in 2024. It looks like people will go out for signatures. There's also an effort to try to redo it in the process that had been done last year. The city attorney has been pushing that. So it's still a little early to tell, but again, it just shows the importance of this process.
Yeah, and how much power you have and you wield over that.
And a lot of the fight over redistricting was about Koreatown specifically on those tapes. We want to hear more from the residents of Koreatown. Gina Silva is there, and she's got questions. Gina.
Well, I can tell you, we've been having a great conversation. First of all, with everything you heard, have you all lost faith in your local politicians?
Yes.
Absolutely. Explain why.
You know, the Koreatown redistricting task force spent upwards of eight months on redistricting, trying to galvanize and organize the community. You know, Koreatown is proud to say that we are probably one of the most diverse communities in the world. We have Oaxacans, we have Mexican-Americans, all sorts of Latin Americans, African-Americans, white Americans, and Korean-Americans. So it's not just Koreans in Koreatown. And we worked so hard, and we did public comments on all the redistricting commission meetings. We were all there. The community spoke. We finally got to unify Koreatown into one district after decades. And then, as soon as we were celebrating the victory, the news came out that four city leaders were talking, you know, really, you know, saying racist comments and just disparaging every member of our community. So, you know, I think they're all spineless, and we need to see some resignations soon.
And absolutely, one of the most hurtful things was what they said about Oaxacan residents here in Los Angeles. Daisy, I love your beautiful dress. You know, I know you were hurt by those comments. What do you want our viewers to know about people from Oaxaca?
What I would like to tell you is that we're here to contribute. So we're here, like, we're hard workers. So we have, like, so many, like, values. And I feel like hurt about, like, hearing those comments, especially because I'm empowering, like, community in K-Town, in Westlake, L.A., and Pico Union. And that's the one where Gil was representing. And I feel like the hurt of the community that we trust you, I feel devastated.
It's painful, and it's emotional. I know, I know. I heard those comments. I'm not from Oaxaca, but I'm from Mexico, too, and it was painful. So I totally feel you. All right, I'm going to send it back to you guys in the studio.
Well, that's how emotional this issue has become then, so this is even more of a cry for that independent commission.
Exactly. And I would also say that you're looking at a community that's extremely diverse. You had politicians talking in terrible racist ways about that community. I mean, Koreatown is called Koreatown, but one of the most famous, you know, Oaxacan restaurants, Guelagüeta, is in Koreatown as well. You know, it's someplace that Joe Biden, Kamala Harris visited. And this push for unity for the community, the neighborhood to be in one district, was actually a big fight in that process. Who represented it was also a big fight. We had Nithya Raman, who wanted to represent it because she's been an advocate for renters. And you heard on that tape them talk about them not wanting Nithya to do that. They wanted to sort of kneecap her power. And that was like a big part of this process as always, that sort of politics. And that, though, was not sort of acceptable when it was overlaid with this really racist rhetoric as well.
All right, Ben Aruskas, thank you. We'll hear more from you a little bit later on.
So where do we go from here? That's the topic we tackle in the next half hour. Elsie Granderson and others joining our panel.
You're watching "L.A. in Crisis," the call for change, live on Fox 11 and streaming live on Fox LA, the L.A. Times, and live now.
L.A. never ceases to impress me.
Yeah, I guess that's one way to avoid traffic.
Or become your true self. That's an Angelino right there. By living his truth, he brings the city to life.
That guy?
Yeah. You, me, and that guy. What we do right here, right now, can change everything.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about how many sound baths you've been doing.
That's fair.
Prop 64 was passed by the voters in California in 2016, and basically, it legalized the sale and use of recreational cannabis. Legal cannabis was sold to the voters as something that was going to help every Californian. Legal Weed: Broken Promises is a series that examines the state of cannabis in California today. The implications, if this continues to go wrong, are huge.
Go back to our Fox 11 L.A. Town Hall special event with the L.A. Times, "L.A. in Crisis," call for change.
I'm Marla Teas.
I'm Alex Michelson. This is a one-hour town hall. And joining us right now is op-ed columnist for the L.A. Times, Elsie Granderson, assistant professor in political science at Loyola Marymount, Shea Crowder, and director of USC's Equity Research Institute, Manuel Pastor. Welcome all. Thanks for being here.
Elsie, let's start with you. I mean, this really highlights what we've all known, perhaps, about the deep racial divide between the black and brown communities. When you heard these tapes, did you realize it cut this deep?
I did not, not in the present sense. Obviously, we knew about the past, you know, it's well documented, as you mentioned earlier. But when I got to L.A. in 2015, it was on the radio station for ESPN L.A., when we do remotes, all I would see would be brown faces. And so we were predominantly a black, you know, show, but we had lots of Mexican-Americans that supported us. And so as far as my worldview was concerned with Los Angeles, that whatever I thought from the '90s was no longer in existence. And then you hear this tape, you're like, oh, perhaps it still is, it just isn't as visible.
And there's been a long history of that back and forth. What do you make of the sort of racial element of this and where we go from here?
On the one hand, obviously, the explicitly racist nature of this is really shocking. But on the other hand, you know, in my research, I found support that these communities, the black community and the Latino community, they do think of racial solidarity in somewhat different ways. And in particular, they kind of view systemic racism differently. Black people are more likely to look at systems as a part of the problem, as opposed to seeing racist incidents as, like, individual bad behavior. But in terms of where we might go from here, I think that there is some reason for hope in that people at the local level might become more politically engaged based on what we saw happen this week.
Mr. Pastor, do you think that there's a chance that this could actually help bridge the divide because it is so deep and painful?
Well, the convenient thing about being an academic is you can think two things are true at the same time. One of them is that there's tremendous tension, and also that there's a task within the Latino community to confront anti-black racism, anti-indigenous, and homophobia. Those things do exist. But at the same time, there's particularly in Los Angeles, a storied history of collaboration from the way in which the black community supported Mexican-American youth at the Sleepy Lagoon trial in the 1940s, to the campaign for Mayor Tom Bradley, to the campaign for Antonio Villarosa, to, in fact, the black-brown organizing that launched Karen Bass's career, one of our candidates for mayor right now. So we've got that to build on, but it's really important to realize that, you know, it takes decades to build trust, and it can be shredded in moments with a cruel and careless conversation. And that is what occurred.
It's interesting. Bass brought up many of those same things in an interview with me a few days ago, saying there's a lot to build on that we've worked on over the years. We want to bring the studio audience back into it. We want you to raise your hand if you think that the city council, as currently constituted, is racist. No hands go up thinking that. Raise your hand as you will. Has this made you change your vote for L.A. mayor at all, this controversy? Has it made you change your vote? No hands going up on that. Interesting.
Well, now we want to get a question from one of our studio audience members. There she is. Let's hear from Jennifer Wu. She's a college student at LMU. Welcome.
Hi, I'm also the managing editor of my school's newspaper, The Loyola, and I'm also a first-time voter in this midterm election. So I think a lot of people associate tolerance and inclusion as a major pillar of progressive politics. Yet here we have three progressive Latino city council members in Los Angeles spewing slurs and racist rhetoric behind closed doors. What are we supposed to make of this, and how does it, you know, connect to our current state of partisan politics?
Yeah, Manuel, what does this mean also about the issue of Latino power? Because the demographics are changing. This city is more Latino than it was even 10 years ago, and it's less black than it was 10 years ago.
That conversation was ostensibly about building Latino political power. There has been no bigger damage to Latino political power than that conversation, which was explicitly about reducing black political power instead of building the kind of unity that we need to go forward, and that has damaged relations for, you know, I think, years to come. As a young person, though, I, not me, you, I hope that you can see that we can, we have had tough times before, that we can work through this, and that in particular, the reaction of a younger generation of activists to this, where they have stood up, including Latino and Latina activists, calling out in Spanish the racism of their senior leaders. I mean, listening to City Hall and realizing that the most common chant was fuera, get out, in Spanish, right? That I think young people are ready to lead right now and to understand that what we need for all of our communities is an agenda about improving the situation that can actually bring us together, not falsely through kumbaya, but through hard conversations that need to be triggered by what just occurred.
Well, let's continue our hard conversation, and let's check in with Phil Schuman out there in Studio City. Phil.
Well, we have eight people from across the San Fernando Valley who've been following everything very closely here tonight. And let's start with Michael Browning, who lives in Van Nuys, a president of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. What are you hearing tonight, and what is the most important thing to come out of this, Michael?
Well, what I'm hearing is that we, as the people of Los Angeles and the valley, need to be united and call for Sadio and DeLeón's resignation, and they need to step down immediately because every day that they are in office is another racist attack, is another anti-black attack, another anti-gay, anti-child, anti-adoption, anti-Armenian. And that's their legacy now, that they're serial racists, and it's time for them to go.
I think everybody here at this crowd, this audience at the town hall agrees with that. Rohilio Tabarez, your perspective briefly, sir, on what needs to happen now?
Yes, I think the question has been posed about healing, what is required for healing. From a traditional standpoint, there is a process for healing. One is acknowledgement of harm done, grieving, and we hurt some of the pain. As an indigenous person myself, there's a need for grieving, and then atonement, making things right for the people that have been harmed, and then a transformation, which I think is the most important thing. It adds me to hear...
We're still in the first stages of this. All right, so that's what everybody is talking about. They have to resign so they can begin the healing processes, which is what we've heard from Councilman Bonin and others. Live from our Studio City location in the town hall, Alex Marla will send it back to you.
Shea, to you, some last thoughts, about 45 seconds or so.
Yeah, so I think, in summary, we know that having a coordinated effort to build political power for a marginalized community, that in and of itself isn't bad. When done right, you get the civil rights movement. But what we saw was explicitly racist, anti-black, anti-indigenous. At the same time, like my esteemed colleague said, two things can be true as an academic. So on the one hand, we saw something really negative happen. On the other hand, there might be positive implications for the way young folks can get involved.
I just want to add that two things can be true at the same time in real life, too, not just in academia.
Not just in academia. Good point, good point, Elsie. You two, thank you so much for being with us.
We need to heal the city, and we need to fix the city. We need to build relationships between communities, and we need to fix the redistricting process.
And we need to get to a commercial break, or else they're going to get mad at us.
Yeah, real bad. You're watching "L.A. in Crisis," the call for change, live on Fox 11 and streaming live on Fox LA, the L.A. Times, and live now.
I wrote this letter to the L.A. Times trying to address the excessive amount of pollution that we breathe in daily.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times because of the culture of the Torrance police.
I wrote to the L.A. Times because there's other cities who already banned leaf blowers.
I wrote to the Los Angeles Times to point out the problems with illegal abortion.
Ta-da!
It's your garage.
Mom, it's an ADU.
An AD who?
An additional dwelling unit. I read this article in the L.A. Times about the housing shortage and...
Did you do this for me?
Needs a little bit of work, but...
No! What should we start?
Cut, that's the one. All right, cut. So great.
I can't even celebrate. I am so worried we're not going to find our lead for episode three.
I found her. I'm telling you, she is about to blow up.
I've never heard of her.
Thank you. Came from nowhere.
Do you think she can do the backbend?
Used to be yoga instructor. I know everyone's a yoga instructor in L.A., but the envelope is calling her a frontrunner for this year's award season.
Bring her in.
Yeah.
Okay, let's talk about the tentacles. They're kind of like arms, not legs.
Welcome back to our special town hall event. Let's go back to La Mert Park, where Coco McAvoy is speaking with community members.
Good evening, and we have a lot of people who want to sound off. I'm going to start with Tara.
Black Americans here in L.A. have constantly coalition with other groups to help them get their political power. It's time for those coalitions to work in reverse and prioritize the needs of black Americans, Black Angeles specifically.
And now to Justin.
We just need an entire culture change and just be able to strengthen just independent parties so we can hold these elected officials accountable. There needs to be no opportunity in redemption either.
And now we're going to go over to Rovon, who also wants to make a comment.
The African-American vote...
The African-American vote is under attack nationally, state by state, and now we know locally. And it needs to be addressed, and we need to maintain our power despite all the racist comments that are going on today.
And now to Noemi.
Nuri's apology was insufficient. She needs to come back to the table and apologize to all of the communities she's offended and really have-- be addressed by the African-American community, hear the hurt firsthand. I think her being able to just jump away and resign was an easy cop-out. And now the community, Los Angeles, is left trying to deal and grapple with Nuri and her actions. So we need to bring Nuri back to the table and address her directly.
Thank you so much, everyone here at the Metaphor Club. We have a great group here. I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Coco. Our Christine Devine took to the streets of L.A. to ask one simple question. Where do we go from here?
That's next. You're watching "L.A. in Crisis: The Call for Change," live on Fox 11 and streaming live on Fox LA, The L.A. Times, and Live Now.
So great.
I can't even celebrate. I am so worried we're not going to find our lead for episode three.
I found her. I'm telling you. She is about to blow up.
I've never heard of her.
Thank you. The envelope is calling her the frontrunner for this year's award season.
Bring her in. Okay, let's talk about the tentacles.
Prop 64 was passed by the voters in California in 2016, and basically it legalized the sale and use of recreational cannabis. Legal cannabis was sold to the voters as something that was going to help every Californian. Legal Weed: Broken Promises is a series that examines the state of cannabis in California today. The implications, if this continues to go wrong, are huge.
Okay.
Ta-da!
It's your garage.
Mom, it's an ADU.
An AD who?
An additional dwelling unit. I read this article in The L.A. Times about the housing shortage and ways to get around the red tape--
Did you do this for me?
It needs a little bit of work, but--
No!
I forgot your housewarming gift. It's an earthquake kit.
Oh, now you want to scare me?
I mean, I'm just saying, the big one's coming.
Let me enjoy this moment. I have a lot of decorating to do. Where should we start? I got to move my things out here.
A big question we've been exploring this hour. Where do we go from here?
Our Fox 11 anchor and friend, Christine Devine, has covered news in this town with a focus on the community like no one else has. And she set out on the streets of L.A. to see what the people have to say.
A sunny, so-called day during dark times in Los Angeles city politics.
It's really disappointing. Here are historically two groups, lacking privilege, somewhat oppressed by the larger political community, and one seems to be taking their knives out and sticking them in the back of another.
The outrage universal on the racist remarks by then-council president Nuri Martinez heard on leaked audiotape.
We need new language. Ridiculous.
I think it's awful, but I also think it shines a light on a real issue. There's a lot of systemic racism.
From peaceful Silver Lake Park to blocks from City Hall, there's passionate reaction.
It's very close to home. I myself have experienced racism in the past, and it is an ugly thing.
Downtown L.A., meet one of your entrepreneurs. We've got a restaurant opening called Native Sun. What kind of food?
American and vegan.
Alex Guerrero is from East L.A.
I think as Angelinos, we will definitely move forward, and for the better.
You're hopeful.
I am very hopeful.
Of the three council members on that tape, for Stephen Blunt of Boyle Heights, there's a personal connection.
I don't know if they need to change down there, but I grew up with Gil Sadio, and as long as I know him, he wasn't racist. There's Gil. There's me right there.
Bottom line, the scandal comes just weeks before the November midterm election. We've got an election coming up. Does it make you more interested in the election?
I was already interested in the election. It makes me more hopeful that it might light a fire under more people.
I do have to vote. Absolutely, of course I have to vote, and I hope that, you know, that my vote matters.
You live here in downtown L.A.?
Yes, I do.
Cory McLean works in tech with nonprofits.
I'm very into politics and why I moved here from New York anyway, so I know all this thing's going on. I'm just trying to figure out where I can fit in.
Christine Devine, Fox 11 News.
All right, let's bring back our Elsie Granderson and Erica D. Smith from The L.A. Times. Your reaction, we heard a lot of hopefulness in there. Do you feel that way?
I do, and that hope begins with the removal of Kevin De León. Whether he removes himself or they find some sort of package deal that makes him happy to leave, but you cannot move forward in terms of the work the city needs to do in the day-to-day operations, let alone a healing process as long as his name is attached to the city council. He needs to go.
Erica, where do we go from here?
Yeah, I agree with Elsie. We have to absolutely, you know, find a way to get rid of Kevin De León. But also, I think the city council needs to move forward with a lot of the efforts they talked about earlier today about fixing the redistricting process so it's more independent, about maybe expanding the size of the city council. But we also need to rely on our community activists who have stepped forward in a way to kind of heal some of the racial tensions that we've seen. So I think it needs to be two, you know, needs to move along two tracks.
All right, up next, final thoughts. You're watching "L.A. in Crisis," the Fox 11 L.A. Times Town Hall. We'll be right back.
I wrote this letter to The L.A. Times trying to address the excessive amount of pollution that we breathe in daily.
I wrote to The Los Angeles Times because of the culture of the Torrance Police.
I wrote to The L.A. Times because there's other cities who already ban leaf floors.
I wrote to The Los Angeles Times to point out the problems with illegal abortion.
L.A. never ceases to impress me.
Yeah, I guess that's one way to avoid traffic.
Or become your truest self. That's an Angelino right there. By living his truth, he brings the city to life.
That guy?
Yeah. You, me, and that guy. What we do right here, right now, can change everything.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about how many sound baths you've been doing.
That's fair.
Welcome back. As we reflect on our conversation this last hour, let's turn to our studio audience. A show of hands if you feel more hopeful.
A little more hope.
Okay.
That one's doing a Beyonce thing.
Put a ring on it.
We're about to have that moment over there. Erica D. Smith, your big takeaway from this big hour we just had?
I mean, despite the hope from our studio audience, we have not, obviously, solved the crisis in L.A. in one hour. We have a lot of work to do.
I will hope the National Democratic Party realizes this is not a local story. It just happened in Los Angeles, but the issues are national.
Yeah, you made a point earlier that we could set an example here.
Absolutely. What's happening in Los Angeles, a conversation's happening in Houston, it's happening in Chicago, it's happening anywhere in which there's increased population of Latinos within an urban area, and you see the bumping of the two communities. So this is an opportunity for the Democratic Party in particular, but also both parties, because everyone wants to take advantage of these voters, right? This is how you do it. You begin by healing.
L.A. can lead again.
Yeah.
L.A. can lead again, and oftentimes, California is coming attractions to the rest of the country of what's to come. We want to say a big thank you to you guys and The L.A. Times for this partnership on this and for all the resources you've expended on this. A big thanks to our team at Fox 11 for helping. Big thanks to our studio audience.
Huge thank you.
Give yourselves a round of applause.
Yes.
Thanks for coming in for this important discussion. Our thanks to all the folks at all of the locations all over Southern California.
We thank you so much for spending some time with us tonight. I'm Marla Teas.
I'm Alex Michelson. Extra starts now.